To order the Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, meeting of the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemens.
Here.
Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
And Van Buren is here. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. You all rise, and would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while you're standing, everyone who's going to testify tonight needs to be sworn in. So if you would raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony that you present tonight will be the whole truth, so help you God. Thank you. And a reminder for everyone to silence your electronic devices. Another reminder that anyone who testifies either on the, out in the hallway, on the clipboard, or here on the podium, you have to sign in with your name and contact information. You can do it when you come up and testify at the podium. We have a sheet right here. Okay, first item of business is approval of the minutes of the March 10th, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Lavoy.
Second, Clemens.
We motion on a second. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens.
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Minutes approved. Next item is the open forum. This is a time when anyone from the public can come and testify at anything that is not on our published agenda for the evening. And seeing no one out there, we'll move on. First, we'll review the, review of the public hearing procedures. First, we start with the applicant. He or she may come forward to the podium, present his or her case and request. And then we turn to staff. The village staff will make comments regarding the background of the issue and any other pertinent information. Then the public gets to weigh in, pro and con, comments, questions. And then it's the commissioners' turn. We discuss it, and we can ask questions, excuse me, of you to clarify things, and then finish with, we will vote. And just as a reminder that our votes tonight on your requests are recommendations only. We are not final approval. We make a recommendation to the village board, and then staff will notify you when, at a future date, you can go and present to the board, and they'll make the final decision. We have no old business tonight. We'll move right on into new business. First item is Planning Zoning Commission 87-2020. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from Community School District 201, specifically tonight, the Westmont Junior High School at 944 Oakwood Drive, for the following. First, a special use permit to replace an existing monument sign with an electronic message board sign in the R3, single-family detached residence district. For the board members, item B, you can strike. It's no longer part of the discussion. And the second request is a variance to allow the electronic message board component of the sign to include moving video images. And who will speak on behalf of the school district?
My name is Joe Smith. I'm the Director of Facilities for the district. So I'll start my presentation. So a little background information, our current sign is 20-plus years old. The plastic lenses on the outside are starting to yellow and crack. Tracks for the lettering for each piece, there's a track they fit into, they're starting to crack, and it's difficult to stay in place. It's very tiring to change the messages. The lighting on it is all not reliable. Proposed replacement.
Okay, one thing, try to speak directly into the microphone for the home television audience.
Okay.
And you may pull that mask down. I think it will help a lot, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the proposed replacement for the sign, it's the same footprint as the existing sign we have currently. The difference would be, this would have a 9mm Cirrus LED display. The 9mm is just the quality of the picture. The illumination of the sign would be controlled by a photocell that would dim with the light outside. So if it's super dark out, it would be not as bright because it's dark. If it's bright, you know, it adjusts to the light. We could also schedule it to turn on and off, so we could schedule it to turn off at nine o'clock if it interferes with the residents in the next slide. And then all project costs were raised by the PTO from the junior high, so it was all funded by donations and events that they had. So the location of the sign, as you can see, this yellow mark here, A, is where our current sign is. Another proposed location is B, which is adjacent to the high school sign across the street. So the next sign, talk about the pros and cons. So the existing location for A is a benefit because we could reuse the same concrete footings and electric. It's close to the main entrance of the junior high. In both sides of the traffic, entering the front loop would see the sign there. The cons is that it is across from four homeowners across the street. Location B, pros of it, it's further away from the homeowners, closer to the high school sign. The cons of it, because it is further away from the main entrance, not all traffic would see the sign. In the future, if the high school ever added a similar sign, being across the street from each other could be a distraction for people driving. The entrance to the high school is right there, so there is a lot of people walking there, so that could become an issue. We would also have to pour new footings and run new underground electric. The cost for that, the footings would be in additional $1,800 they would have to raise. The underground boring is a little bit more expensive, so that would have to be adjusted. And then, this is just a bigger map to kind of show you where everything is at, so. You have any questions?
Okay. Okay, sir. Thank you. Staff, comments? So Village Planner Nalini Johnson.
So this is Nalini Johnson, planner for the village. We don't have a microphone over there, so that's why I'm up here. Otherwise, I would just get my comments over there. Basically, the variance request entails allowing video images that are like animation. So that is a one point that needs to be considered by the board, and so, or the commission. And because they're requesting video animation is why I was suggesting relocating the ground sign as a mitigating aspect, that is something that is approved or recommended. To be approved because to the north and east, there are some residences directly in front. And so basically, the light would be radiating into the windows and so on. So I thought that would be an aspect to mitigate. However, if we, if the commission decides not to approve the video, then, you know, we find no issues with repairing, is what this would be, a sign, and upgrading it and turning it into an electronic sign, or adding the electronic sign component per code. And all of the stipulations are in the staff report.
Thank you. And sir, do you have any response to her comments before we go to the?
Um, the only thing that we would say is like the dimming will keep it down so it wouldn't be as bright. We'd also like turn it off as it gets that dark, you know, like at nine o'clock, it could go off, and then, I don't know how much of a distraction it may be. I do know that they did go door to door, this was like three or four years ago, when they started talking about this. At that time, the neighbors didn't mind, but, you know, if one of them were to move and someone comes in, you never know.
Could you expand for us, please, on specifically what moving video images, what that means? And can you give us any examples of other schools?
It would just be like a graphic, you know, like, similar to digital displays that you see where it'll display the temperature or the time, and then it will fade to something else. So that, just the visual of that would be displayed. So it would be going from image to image, or a short video on the screen of, I don't know, advertising for the volleyball game that night. Something like that, like a video of a volleyball going, and then the schedule, this is the time that we'll be at, and therefore, you know.
What I'm hearing, something like animation, or is it more than?
It would just be an animation, yeah, just going from script to script.
Well, I mean, I wonder, looked at Hensdale Central signage, and there are a lot of letters, and there would be scrolling, the letters may be moving, but there's nothing like any figures moving. What I picture, when I think of animation or video imaging, is like television or?
No, it wouldn't be like that. It would be like, so the signs are all programmed by a computer. So they have like generic images that you can play for a volleyball game, or for a basketball game. There's generic images that would be a video of whatever you wanted related to basketball. If there's just generic videos that you could put on there as transitions from this script to this script to whatever you have on there.
No, but would it be somebody bouncing a ball?
You pretend, yeah, it could be. I mean, that could be a graphic on there.
But not television-style quality?
No, it would be the quality of nine millimeter graphics.
Right. But it wouldn't be, for example, a recorded shot of a volleyball game from last year where you'd show a 10-second snippet of kids playing?
No, not, it wouldn't be anything like that. Like, you couldn't program, you couldn't program your own videos to the sign. Like, if the, if the school recorded a video of themselves doing something for, an event for school, they couldn't take that video and put it on the sign. You couldn't program it like that.
It doesn't have the resolution capability for that.
No.
Right.
No, yeah. It wouldn't be like a TV script, like, it's a, it's a sign very similar to like the airports, like by Midway, like that kind of a sign, where they can, you know, put one advertisement on the screen, and then it'll switch to another one. So it's just that kind of imagery. It's not like TV quality.
Are you familiar with the monument signs at the Westmont Public Library and the South Johannic Fire Station?
Right, yes, it'd be very similar to that.
It would be that?
Yeah.
Because I guess the issue I'm troubled with is this video, moving video imaging. And is that animation, or is that scrolling of words, or?
It's both. I mean, it's an animation and scrolling of words.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, would you?
Yeah, I was going to ask about, because I was picturing the Westmont sign, so when you drive by, like, it can flash at you and stuff like that. So that's a concern, you know, of a sign flashing in a neighborhood, and I can imagine the neighbors across the street. So that's why, you know, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah.
Commissioner Thomas?
Along the same thing about the neighbors and distractions and stuff like that, I don't know, like you said, several years ago, or three years ago, four years ago, they petitioned out, what do you, what do you think about this possible moving?
Yeah.
They might not still be there. I don't know whether they know about it or not. Has the junior high petitioned the neighborhood that you know of, or?
I know that there is a couple families there who do have children in the district that the junior, the junior high principal and assistant principal I've talked to in the past. Is recent, I'm not sure, like, how recent, but in the past, they were okay.
You might, you might want to try that again, so no matter what happens here, if it passes here, they can still go before the trustees.
Right.
And if they have concerns.
Sure.
That's awful expensive to be moving the sign, though, for the?
If it's on public notice, they would have gotten mail notice.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is the underground boring. That's very expensive work. I mean, the equipment involved, the locating, it's, there's a lot to it.
I don't, I don't know how distracting it would be to drivers. It's not like drivers have never seen it before, and, oh my, look at that, what's, who was that, you know?
Yeah, and the images don't move that fast, where it would be like a big distraction, you know what I mean? It would be more just information, there's a volleyball game at this time, there's a Scholastic Bowl, you know, whatever it may be.
I'm more concerned about the light to neighbors and that than I am to distracting drivers.
That's, I mean, and that's something I think we could work out with them, like, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have it on at after eight-thirty, nine o'clock, you know, when it gets that late, there's really no reason, there's nobody driving over there other than residents anyways. You know, it's more so for the parents coming to pick kids up, just to know what's going on next week, that kind of thing, so.
Allison, you had another question?
Yeah, what I was looking to, when I, there, because you were saying across from the other location would be across from the high school sign.
Right.
But like halfway in between, where the actual sign for the zoning, like when I saw, you know, the hearing zoning sign?
Sure.
Is about halfway. It's beyond Williamsburg Street. If you have to move it, if you're at that point, I think then it's away from the houses, but then it's not across from the high school one, because you said about confusion.
Yeah.
So when I saw it, I thought, well, that could be a compromise of where that sign is right now. It's like halfway, and I understand you still would have the electrical that you'd have to run, though.
Yeah.
But I think that would be happy compromise.
Nalini, do you have a comment about Commissioner Clemens' suggestion?
You know, driving through there, it is true, the only thing I was thinking, though, is that you have a walkway, I don't know, there's a little echo. There's a little walkway here. Is this the pedestrian entrance?
Yeah.
And then there's a crosswalk, where's the crosswalk? Is it here, is it here?
There's two there, I believe.
So, you know, locating it right next to the crosswalk may not be the best thing is because they're trying to get out into traffic and that type of thing. So we do have to think of issues like that as well.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you had, Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes. I did a little survey today of the signage that we currently have, and we have no videos.
Okay.
When I say video, you have moving people, or stick figures, or something like that on there. Reason that we have disallowed that, and most communities do, is the distraction it causes to drivers.
Sure.
And even the, the number of times and times that things change, if they change too quickly.
Right.
These will grab your attention, you have to stay with it. So this is our real concern. But if it's lettering and moving letters, or something that changes from one to the other naturally, it would be, I would consider it to be like the one at the library.
Right.
And the one at the fire station on the south side. And in that case, I would not oppose it. Neither the location nor the, nor the, what you call animation, because in our code, it does not allow for animation or videos.
Okay.
And when, but we have a little problem with definition of terms here.
Yeah.
And that's what I were trying to get at, is that we don't want to like a movie up there.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense.
Okay? Totally.
Well, it also doesn't allow, like, an image to slide into another image. So you have to have, basically, under the code provision, a static image, and then it has to go to another image not faster than five seconds apart. So you can't like image, image, image.
Right.
Flashing up there quickly.
Yeah.
And in addition, as Commissioner Van Buren said, no videos and no animation or moving parts.
Right.
And so you, I, you said there's no video, but there are some, there is some sort of animation with moving parts. What about the transition between slides that are shown?
So all that is controlled by the program, that you can set to time between each graphic. You could set it to the speed it goes from one to the other. The speed of, if the scroll is going from left to right, it's at a speed that you can control. It's all programmed by the, the program that comes with the Cirrus display.
Could you only show static images as opposed to animation if you chose through programming?
I'm sure you could. I'd have to talk to the sign company, but typically, that's how it is, that the sign program that you have attached to it will do all the logistics of that, you know. It seems like they're all pretty universal, the sign rules with that, so the programs, I think, can, you know, they take that into account. They are the same boards that are on like the highways, like I said, the entrance of like Midway Airport, where they have like, there's the screens where they have this way, the directional signs, they're the same, it's the same displays.
Commissioner Scales, let's say you.
Well, thanks for presenting everything. I guess, a couple quick questions. Does it, does it essentially adhere to the restrictions of the display of messages that we have in our code, the way it's, the way it's proposed? I don't know if that's for you, Nalini, or?
As far as I can see.
Or you?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I can read, I know that there is the five second between each one. I know that that's covered. The size of it is under the allotted amount, the 40%.
And it's pre-programmed, you can change that with the stroke of a few keys and?
Right. You can also set limits, like on the photocell that adjusts the brightness. You could set a limit of whatever the homeowners association recommends, they do have like foot candle recommendations. So you could set it at the maximum brightness of 50-foot candles, whatever it may be, and then it won't adjust brighter than that.
And it has an auto dimmer.
Right.
Capacity to it as well.
Right. So like in the wintertime, when it's dark at five o'clock, it's at the brightness it needs to be at five o'clock because the sun's down. And then at five o'clock, if you don't want it above this brightness, you can control that.
Right.
So, you know, if it's 40 or 30, whatever it needs to be at that, at that time, you can set it at no, no more than this, you know.
Sure.
It's all adjustable.
And the existing sign, I mean, I'm familiar with it, it may or may not have hit it with a golf ball from the golf course across the street.
Yeah.
I'm not that bad, I did, but. The location B, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, and I would be more, logically, it would seem to go better where it's currently located. So I would be in favor of that, just based on?
Sure.
Flow of traffic, and that location is?
Yeah.
Well past the junior high, just from that standpoint. And really, is there one homeowner that is going to be directly facing that sign further up at the corner, mostly?
The person that's maybe up here would have like direct, you know, the sign goes this way and this way. So these houses will just be getting like, from that A over.
Do the foot candles go?
They'll go this direction and this direction.
But not off to the sides?
No, there's no, there's nothing on this way.
Got it.
So I'm like, so here, like, this right here is the sign that, that's the sign that faces the homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the screen that's facing, what would it be, like north and south there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, just a few things. Notices went out, notices came back. Did we get any comments from the residents?
No calls, no emails, anything.
Okay, I'm in favor of A, because I think that if it's at location B, number one, I sympathize with the cost and of the raising of the money to build a sign, and it's a pretty high cost to actually relocate it, it's pretty far away, so conduits going that far is expensive, and so I'm okay with that. And the other reason is if both signs are located there, that's the main entrance to the high school, and I'm with Commissioner Van Buren on that as far as a traffic distraction at that intersection of high school kids pulling in and out. And that's the biggest reason why I'm in favor of leaving it at A. And then the one, two things. One is that the presentation and the proposal lacks one critical thing, and that's maybe some strategically placed landscaping material. And as that relates to my last comment, which is, it might be helpful, maybe to include photometrics, since this is an illuminated sign, you know, we can actually treat this as, as a, you know, a parking lot light, to make sure that light doesn't go off-site, just like our parking lot lights don't. That might be helpful to understand how bright this sign is, and how much of an impact it would be if we had that information. So I would say that if you could commit to meeting the same requirement, as far as the foot candles being released off-site, I wouldn't have a problem with it. And then if you can add maybe, I see, I'm looking at the landscape when I was out there, the trees to the, at, towards the intersection, directly to the north, block the view of that sign to the residential properties. And also, there's, it's pretty heavily treed along the other side of the street, where I don't, you know, in front of those houses, so I really don't see it as being a big problem there because the light shines up and down the street. And there's also trees to the south that also block that, that view. So, but I think that maybe a arboretum or two strategically placed to block a view, and monitoring the, the foot candle release, I think it's a half a foot candle off-site, that if maybe your sign guys can put that together and do a little photometric plan over, you know, if we're going to have 10 foot candles going off-site, it's a big difference than, and I think everybody would feel differently about it if we had that kind of, of light in the right of way. So it's a standard, standard practice when we do site lighting, that a photometric plan is there, and we have an ordinance related to that. Other than that, I don't have any problem with, with the sign. I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of A. And if we could just do a couple things to make sure that we're not, you know, blaring the neighborhood, and I'm sure that they can provide that.
So would you like to stipulate these as part of the ordinance, or just simply?
I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say about that, that that's something that, that might mitigate this whole thing, that might be able to provide some sort of lighting constraint on it, that we don't have this big blaring.
Well, I would just say, that's not really before the board tonight, as far as what we're tasked for, but anybody else have a comment on?
Well, we're, we're here to determine whether these, we'll allow the sign, and secondly is whether we have a video on it. Now, the engineering part of the light candles and so forth, that is all covered by our regulations, and that would be covered by our inspectors and our building inspectors.
Oh, I don't think so. I think the site lighting is site lighting, it's totally different to the sign light.
But we are not, this is not our, our task to determine and to try and be engineering their lighting.
Well, I'll say this, if, if you think there's going to be an adverse impact from a use, in this case, a sign, you're entitled to consider, you know, reasonable mitigation matters. And one of those would be the brightness of the sign, and you can only figure that out through a photometric study. I agree with you that normally, if someone comes in with a site plan for a parking lot and they show lighting, you would tell them, all right, you've got to comply with the photometrics standards of the village. But those photometric standards don't, again, those apply to lighting, but they don't apply to signs, I don't think. And we don't require sign applicants to do a photometric study.
Never heard it before, John, never.
Right. But again, this is new technology. And this is also technology not on Ogden Avenue, which is heavily commercial, it's in a residential district, Zoned R3. So if you want my opinion, whether it's reasonable to require a photometric study, either to come back and present it to you guys, or to have it done by the time it gets to the village board, or to have it done at some point before permitting, and then it possibly would have to come back to you if they can't meet the photometric studies, that's a reasonable condition you can put on. That's a reasonable condition, you can put on a special use permit. Same thing with landscaping. They don't have to provide a site plan and a landscaping plan. But if you think that landscaping or fence would mitigate an adverse impact, it's within your power to impose that as a special condition.
I, I don't think that, you know, in my opinion, just I brought it up. I wouldn't necessarily want you to come back and do that. All I'm saying is that might be a way for you and your sign company and staff to?
Sure.
To understand it, how much of an impact it would be. And if it, if it, within the same parameters as our lighting specifications, I don't, I don't see a reason why, uh, you should come back here to do that. I, I'm just making a suggestion, that's a good way to evaluate it.
That's something we can get. I mean, I can get the foot candles and like?
Can, can you speak up, please?
Sorry, I could get, I can get that information. I can get the foot candles, how bright it could potentially be, how bright you could set it as a minimum. I can get that information.
Yeah, just let staff work through that.
Okay, any other comments from staff?
Well, I mean, I just have one, uh, concern, I guess, would be in terms of page sevens restrictions on display of messages, the illusion of movement. I'm not sure what exactly that means in terms of, um, you know, there's the illusion of movement with the moving. So that, that's the only comment I have. But if you're comfortable with it, that's fine.
And, and as of right now, they're asking for a variance to allow animation or illusion of movement, et cetera. So, you know, that's what's something you guys would have to vote up or down. And if you were to vote it down as a recommendation and, and the village board were to agree with that, then, uh, the applicant said they could program it so it's more static images and, and not video. So that's up to you guys, but, you know, and, and no one's here from the public objecting either.
Chris, anything else?
I'm good. I think it's a good, good plan and a good sign and a good ad, uh, because I drive past it probably three or four times a day. So I live right there, so.
Could be an upgrade.
Yeah.
Okay, if no one has anything else? Chair would entertain a, a motion to approve. This, we have two things. Uh, one is the special use permit, the other is the variance. And first, special use permit to, to replace the existing, uh, sign with electronic message board. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Clemmons?
Second motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion on the motion. Roll call, sir.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Sherman Carmichael?
Yes. So sir, you have our, uh, recommendation. So, uh, the school district would be notified when, uh, when you can come before the board. And, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Lavoy's suggestions on, uh, on landscaping and, uh, and at least a, a proposed impact with the, with the lighting and how, how you would manage that would, would help sell the issue to the board.
Okay, so that is item A only?
And that's item A only, thank you. Now, we have the, uh, variance to allow electronic messaging board component of the sign to include moving video images. Motion?
So move Lavoy to approve.
Second, Scales.
Okay, I have motion and second to approve. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
No.
Commissioner, uh, Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Sherman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck with the proposal. Thank, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a PZC four-four dash twenty-one twenty-one. And this is to consider a request from Kimberly Duffick for a property at thirty-six South Cass, number forty-four for the following. A special use permit to operate a beauty, beauty parlor on the ground floor in the B one limited business district. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, sorry, I'm very nervous. Um, how do I start it? Okay.
So don't be nervous, and, uh, I just learned a new word this week, uh, that is esthetician.
Yes.
I didn't, I wasn't even familiar with it.
I'm a cosmetologist and I'm, I'm an esthetician. We do skincare.
Did she sign in? Did you sign in?
Uh, yeah, I just didn't put on my? Alright, so I am, oh, what? Okay. I'm proposing opening up skintimately yours. Um, my name is Kimberly Aduffick, I'm a licensed esthetician. How do you go to the next?
You just?
Oh, I did it, I did it. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, or it's not the same? Okay, thank you. So I plan to provide aesthetic services for clients. Um, I will provide facials and facial treatments, body waxing, body contouring, eyelash extensions, eyelash and eyebrow tinting and vacuum cupping, cupping therapy with, um, electro muscle stimulation. Did I just hit spacebar again?
You usually hit the arrow.
That, okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Um, these are, are the facials and the facial treatments that I will do will become, will come from aesthetics back bar. And they will allow me to provide, um, facials to any type of skin conditions or different types of skin like normal, combination, oily, dry, sensitive and aging. And these are the products. I don't, yeah, if I just click on it. Slide show again. Sorry. Why it's not doing it? I'm not sure why. I want to try and? It's showing up on here, but it's not up there.
It's this one?
Yeah.
Wonderful. What was the, uh? What was the link?
It's on the, um?
I think you got confused between PowerPoint and, um?
And it's right here. And?
Okay.
Up, see?
There we go.
Speaker. Okay. So I'll just go back to where I was. Um, like I said, these are the products that I would be using for any client that would come in. I can, um, switch them up to treat their skin however necessary. Um, I have three machines that I'm going to be using in the spa. This is the first one, it's called the Veleza seven-in-one skin rejuvenation system. This machine allows a wide variety of functions that are compatible with each other, which can be offered together as a package treatment or individual treatments. They include microderubration, skin scrubber, hot and cold hammer, radio frequency, micro current with LED, oxygen gun and ultra, ultrasound therapy. Sorry, I'm tripping over my words. I will also, um, provide waxing services, um, from the eyebrows, lips, half arm, full arm, half leg? Bikini, Brazilian, the chest and back. Um, and the wax that I'll be using is mermaid wax because it's hypoallergenic and it's great for all different types of, um, hair. The other machine that I'll be using is a body contouring machine. It's called the Estabella three-in-one cavitation radio frequency system. It combines three different treatments in one machine that allow body treatments that reduce fat and cellulite in different areas of the body. Most commonly, the abdomen, legs, buttocks and arms. The benefits of this machine are that it contours the body, slims and tones areas of excess fat, lifts and tightens the skin. Uh, it's a hundred percent safe and non-invasive. It's rejuvenating to the skin, reduces cellulite, minimizes pores and improves blood circulation. I will also be doing eyelash extensions, um, and eyelash and eyebrow tinting. Um, the three types of eyelash extensions I'll do depending on what the client would like would be classic volume or hybrid and as well as different color tints for their skin tone and hair color. The last machine that I would be using is called the Fit Moderna Electro Muscle Stimulation and Vacuum Cupping Therapy Machine. Um, it has two purposes, which is the electric muscle stimulation as well as the cupping therapy. The electro muscle stimulation improves joint pain and swelling, prevents and reverses muscle loss, enhances rehabilitation of the muscles, increases range of motion for tense muscles or tendons and improves blood flow and circulation. The cupping therapy works on all parts of the body, um, either the face or the body. The facial, um, increases oxygen-rich blood circulation, brightens the skin and minimizes appears of scars, fine lines and wrinkles. It tones the chin, jawline, neck and decolleté, decreases puffiness, regulate oil production and improves nutrient delivery and product absorption. And for the body, um, it's a, for the buttocks, it's a non-invasive butt lift, um, as well as cellulite cupping that reduces buildup of fluids that, for the look of cellulite. And the suction cups break up the cellulite and change texture of the skin with repeated use. This is the floor plan of the spa. So at the top, people would enter there, clients would enter there and be greeted with a seating area and the reception. I have two treatment rooms. And then, um, on the side, there's a restroom and two storage areas where I would keep all my products and gowns and everything for the clients to wear. And thank you for your time.
Uh, could you talk a little bit about the laundry room upstairs?
It's not upstairs. I would bring, I would bring a, um, washer and dryer, electric washer and dryer in and I would put it in either, um, oop, either the restroom's, the last one on the right, it would be in either the first or the second room. Little rooms on, over here. I'd probably put it right there.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Staff?
So, uh, there was a question about the plumbing, and I think that's where that was going in terms of, uh, what plumbing work needs to be done for the space to be usable for your purposes.
Um, I'm, I don't think that there would be anything that would have to be done.
Okay, good, okay, because I, I understood that there was a plumber that needed to come in and put some wire?
Yeah, my, um, brother-in-law, her husband is a plumber. So when I'm able to actually see the unit, I would be able to further know about that. But at the moment, I don't think that there is anything that needs to be done.
Anything else?
Well, the other thing, um, is can you talk about the orientation of the storefront? Um, it is a, a ground floor, um, storefront with access from Richmond? And is there parking available to?
Yeah, there's parking available to all the clients in the parking lot behind, um, the spa or the unit.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be any, nobody would have to park on the street or anything like that. It would be, there's plenty of spaces back there available for clients.
And, and there's one entrance and that's on the south side of the building?
There's two entrances.
Also an entrance from the west side of the building from the parking lot?
Yeah, there's, um, an entrance right here, but I'm not allowed to use it because it is accessible to all, there's apartments above it. So they don't want just random people walking in and out of where people live. So the main entrance would be right here.
Okay. But that back door could be used as an, as an emergency exit?
Yes, yeah.
If required?
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to, uh, address this? Seeing none, uh, we'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, would you start?
Yeah, I, I have, um, no problem with it. Um, I had no problem with the, previous resident, yeah, they moved in and I don't want an empty spot there. And, um, you'll, you'll be able, you, you have a good plan. I have, I'm not against it at all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Buren? Um, does this, um, require a certification or licensing on your part?
I am a licensed esthetician, so I'm licensed to do all of this.
And is this a state license or?
It's, it's skin and, and yeah, and body. Um, I'm certified in all the machines that I have as well as my licensing.
Okay, and have you, uh, operated this elsewhere before?
I've been doing it out of my home right now. So, um, yeah, I have been using them. I'm just ready to open up and expand.
Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Scales?
Um, I think it looks great. Thanks for the presentation and congrats on taking the leap for new business and especially in Westmont. Um, how many, so how many clients would be in there at any one time, just out of curiosity?
Um, well, if, since it's just me, it would be one at a time, um, just because I'm the only one that's going to be in there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Welcome to Westmont. I don't have any questions and I'm in favor of the application or, or the, uh, special use permit.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons?
I'm in favor, though I'm concerned is using something with a hammer, but no.
It's, it sounds, it's not, it's just, it's pretty much just hot and cold. It's not really, it's to open and close the pores on the face, it's not really a hammer.
But I'm in favor, I mean, I think it'll be an asset, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Will most of your clients be, uh, female?
Yeah, yep.
Well, when you talk about the skin aging and so forth, I, there were several members on this commission I noticed could?
I am not, I'm not in favor of not servicing men, so.
I see.
Because a lot of men like to have their, you know, chest waxed and back and stuff like that as well as?
Commissioner Scales was just talking to me about eyelash extensions.
Sure, why not?
I, I have no questions, I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Chair is, uh, positioned to, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Scales?
Second, Clemmons?
A motion, a second discussion?
Who is the second?
Second was, uh, Clemmons. And maybe we have a roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Duffick, you have our, uh, recommendation and, uh, staff will notify you when, uh, you'll be scheduled to, uh, to go before the village board and?
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Westmont and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Might want to take your USB drive.
That's it for agenda items, uh, miscellaneous. Uh, does anyone have any, uh, updates, comments, questions? I would, uh, point out that, uh, Memorial Day is coming up, uh, the last day of the month, Monday, the thirty-first. And, uh, I believe the village is going to have a ceremony at, uh, at the new, around the new, uh, newly developed site there at the flagpole at the north end of, uh, Veterans Park. I don't know what time that would be, but it would be, uh, Monday morning, the thirty-first. So, uh, that's, site's been updated and that's exciting. I, I guess there will not be a, uh, parade this year. But, uh, given that, if no one has anything else, uh, have a, uh, motion to, uh, close this down.
So move, Thomas?
Second, Scales?
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.